Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the Bridgewater Town Council to order this Tuesday night, December 5th, at 7:00. Could we all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I do not have any condolences to read tonight, but could we please have a brief moment of silence in recognition of those and veterans who have passed? Thank you. And again, good evening, everyone. I certainly am grateful to see so many people out tonight. I am the Vice President of the Council tonight. Vice President of the Council sits in for the President to run the meeting when the President is not here. And Eric Moore had a personal commitment tonight, so he's not able to be with us tonight. I believe, Deborah, we have one counselor on Zoom.
She's not on yet.
Not on yet, okay. And Counselor McKinnon, we don't know where he is at the moment. Okay, but we have five. It takes five to have a meeting, and we've certainly have that. Just want to announce that this meeting is being aired live and it is being recorded. As we go through the agenda, we have quite a pretty good agenda tonight that I think will be very informative for everybody. So we'll begin with the first item on the agenda tonight, the approval of the minutes from our previous meeting, which was November 21st.
Motion to approve?
Second. There's a motion and there's a second to approve the minutes from November 21st. Any discussion? Seeing none, all of our votes tonight will need to be because, oh, she's not on. Should we still do the roll call because there is a Zoom link, right? So we'll do...
Is anyone on?
She's not on.
No, she's not on yet. Oh, she's on now.
Just let me know when. I can't see when she's on, so...
Yep, she's on now.
She's on now.
Now you can do it.
So all our votes tonight, because we have a counselor on Zoom remotely participating, all of our votes need to be by roll call.
Counselor Chase?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor George?
Yes.
Counselor Gallagher?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
Counselor Lindy?
Yes.
And Counselor Robinson.
Okay, we'll move on. We have the votes here. I have no announcements tonight. We have no proclamations to read tonight. We'll move on to Item D, Citizens' Open Form. Are there any citizens here this evening that wish to address the council during the Citizens' Open Form portion of the meeting? And we would like to limit your comments to three minutes. Is there anyone here that would like to speak during the Citizens' Open Form portion of the meeting? Please come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and try to keep your comments to three minutes, if you will.
Good evening. Ed Ivaldi Boxwood Lane. At your September 5th meeting, a couple of months ago, I read to you a small portion of Section 1-8 of the Charter, which reminds us of your role as counselors, that Bridgewater citizens elect you to represent their views regardless of your own personal opinions. So taking that a step further, history tells us that the success or failure of the council manager form of government depends heavily on whether elected officials truly represent the public in their views. There are those in town right now who say that you are primarily voting your own values and thoughts and not the wishes of your constituents. Could that actually be true? Many of those same people are now saying that Bridgewater should revert back to its prior form of government, open town meeting, because they don't feel they have a voice. Is that really what we want? The truth is that as a result of the recent redistricting, every citizen in Bridgewater now has seven voices representing them instead of the previous three, one district counselor and six at-large counselors. Yet I know for me personally, I have not been contacted by any of my seven counselors soliciting my views on any particular topics, nor have I seen any invites, other than from Counselor Gallagher, to attend citizen gatherings to discuss town issues and get feedback. I did see something posted on social media recently by Counselor Murphy, reminding citizens of the stipend ordinance hearing held last meeting. While this was certainly a good reminder, a public hearing on a particular matter unfortunately does not constitute getting citizen input because it's usually too late in the process. So from a citizen's perspective, it's not really clear if you are all doing what the Charter calls you to do individually and as a body as you make legislative decisions for the town. If you are, then it would be good for you to verbalize the feedback that you've been given during your discussion so that citizens could actually hear from you the feedback that they've been giving you. I understand that most citizens choose, for various reasons, not to voice their opinions by attending these council meetings and other related meetings, but that still shouldn't stop you from scheduling meetings with your constituents and using social media to gather inputs to your decision-making process. I believe it's been mentioned before, but perhaps you should also consider doing a citizen survey early next year so you can better understand what citizens think and how you can improve your level of support as a council. I hope that with the new year approaching, citizens will begin to see a town council that actively engages with and seeks input from citizens. I'd also like to make one request through you, Mr. President, for an update from our town manager on the status of retail marijuana sales in our town. It's been almost a year now since last January that the citizens voted narrowly to approve the sale of retail marijuana, and it's appropriate to hear now how things have been going this past year, both from revenue and public safety perspectives. So I'd ask Mr. Dutton to add this to his town manager report at the next meeting, which I believe is scheduled for 12/19 or your first meeting in January. Thank you very much.
Are there any other citizens here that wish to speak? Yes, sir.
James Moore, 70 Grove Street, corner of Cedar and Grove Street. Whether you've got those little jersey barriers turning Grove Street up to 1828 into a one-way, I approve of it because it's, there have been no accidents up there since that went into place. It's doing its job. Could we make it prettier? Is that a possibility? I'd like to suggest that somehow we do something to make it more aesthetically pleasing. It's doing its job, but it just needs to be more aesthetically pleasing, and it needs to be arrowed so that people don't wind up facing me as I turned into the street and they've come up the wrong way and we're going hmm 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 hmm, which has happened now about half a dozen times. And I'm polite, so I'll leave it at that. But thank you very much for that. Oh, I had another thought, but it'll come to me later on. Thank you very, very much. I appreciate your attention to this, and if we're going back to the old town meeting format, I move the question. If you remember, I used to do that a lot. Thank you very much.
Is there anybody else here that wishes to speak during the Citizens' Open Form portion of our meeting? Anybody else? Seeing none, we will move on to Item E, Appointments. There are no appointments for us to vote on this evening. Item F is a hearing. It's order FY24017 is our fiscal 2024 classification tax allocations, the adoption of the residential factor. It's a public hearing. I will now open the public hearing at 7:09 PM. Again, this is the annual tax classification hearing that we have at the town council level where we hear from our assessor to give us some options or to set the tax rate for the ensuing fiscal year. So at this moment, I will turn it over to the town manager to introduce our assessor, Shelley McCauley, who will give a presentation on the classification for the tax allocation.
Thank you, Mr. President. You did the introduction, so I will simply turn it over to our chief assessor, Shelley McCauley, who is going to outline the steps that the council needs to take and then provide a recommendation that the Board of Assessors has provided you. So I will turn it over to Shelley.
Thank you. For the public hearing tonight, on the issue of adopting the tax levy percentages for fiscal year 2024, I will present information and data relevant to making such a determination. The Board of Assessors has determined the assessed valuation of all taxable real and personal property reflecting full and fair cash value as of January 1st, 2023, as required by Mass. General Laws. The information was submitted to the DOR and approved on November 9th, 2023. The assessed valuation breakdown is as follows. Class 1 residential, $4,805,682.94. Class 3 commercial, $328,588,806. Class 4 industrial, $249,61,400. Class 5 personal property, $139,218,170, for a total taxable value of $4,817,436,670. Therefore, the residential percentage share of the tax levy at full and fair cash value is 85.12. The commercial, industrial, personal property percentage share of the tax levy at full and fair cash value is 14.88. Calculating and setting the tax rate is a component of a larger process we call the recap process. A municipality's entire budget plan for the fiscal year is laid out on the recap sheet. It lists all appropriations made by the legislative body since the previous year's tax rate was set. Anticipated and actual sources of revenue other than property taxes, such as state aid and estimated local receipts, are also identified. The differences between the appropriation and revenue from these sources must be raised through property taxes. This difference is called the tax levy. Total amount to be raised this year is $91,541,177. Estimated receipts and other revenue sources equal $33,57,496. Therefore, the estimated tax levy for fiscal year 2024, the revenue a community can raise through real and personal property taxes, is $58,483,681. The levy limit, the maximum a community can levy in any given year, is equal to the prior year's levy limit plus amended new growth, the annual two-and-a-half increase, new growth and overrides. The levy limit for fiscal year 2023 was $51,606,360. The amended new growth was negative 627. The two-and-a-half percent was $1,290,143. New growth this year was $1,018,521, for a total of $53,914,397. Therefore, the estimated levy limit for fiscal year 2024 is $53,914,397. That is an increase of $2,308,37 from the 23 levy limit. To calculate the 24 maximum allowable levy, you take the 2024 levy limit, which was $53,914,397, add the debt exclusion of $4,611,12, to get a total maximum allowable levy of $58,525,509. The difference between the maximum allowable levy of $58,525,509 and the tax levy of $58,483,61 is the excess levy capacity. The excess levy capacity for fiscal year 24 is estimated at $41,827,83. The town council must decide the percentages of the tax levy each class of real property and personal property will bear each year. To do so, a residential factor is adopted. The residential factor governs the percent of the tax levy to be paid by each class. The adopted factor can be not less than the minimal residential factor, which is the MRF, calculated by the DOR. The MRF for this year is 91.2589%. If a factor of 1 is adopted, the tax rate would be the same for all classes. This rate is determined by dividing the tax levy by the total value of the taxable property in Bridgewater and then multiplying that result by 1,000. Estimated fiscal year 2004 tax levy of $58,483,681 divided by the value of $4,817,436,670 equals .01214 multiplied by 1,000, estimated tax rate of 1214. I have included in the handouts different what-if scenarios, which show the residential factor of 1 through 91.2589 and the prospective share percentages, levy amounts and estimated tax rates. Please note, the total tax levy remains the same. Shifting the tax burden from the residential class to the commercial, industrial, personal property classes does not increase the amount of money that will be raised through property taxes. Also this year, the average single-family assessed value for fiscal year 24 is $560,826, up from $521,424 in fiscal year 2023, which is an increase of 7.5%. The average commercial valuation for fiscal year 2024 is $1,039,527, up from $847,554, which is an increase of 22.65%. If the town council adopts a residential factor of 1, the estimated average single-family tax bill will be $6,808, up from $6,696, which is an increase of $112. The average commercial bill would be $12,620, up from $10,883, which is an increase of Historically, the town of Bridgewater has always maintained a single tax rate.
Thank you very much. So the recommendation to us tonight would be to adopt a residential factor of 1, which would be $12.14 for the ensuing fiscal year. This is a public hearing. Are there any general questions from the public? Is there anyone here from the public that had any general questions regarding that presentation? Seeing none. Does anyone from the public wish to speak in favor of setting a residential tax factor of 1? Is anybody here who wishes to speak in favor of this?
Could you put your mic a little closer?
A little closer? How's that? Is that better?
I've got them all cranked up.
Okay.
I don't like it.
Seeing none, is there anybody here that wishes to speak in opposition of this recommendation? Is there anybody here that wishes to speak in opposition?
Move the question?
Okay. Have to go through the process, yes. Okay, so, seeing none, I will now open it up to my colleagues on the council. Are there any questions from the counselors to the assessor? Any questions at all? Counselor Lindy?
I don't have a question. I just have a request. I'm lucky I'm on Budget and Finance, and I got to hear this stuff before the meeting, but those are a lot of numbers, and I'm going to make a suggestion next year when we do this, that we have them somehow projected and a PowerPoint or something, because that's just like off to the races. It's hard to process.
Counselor George?
Thank you. Mr. President, this is probably more of a statement than a question, but earlier we had a discussion, and it was, I think, a good trend that we're starting to see an increase on the commercial side of the tax revenue, probably primarily from our developments. So I'm fully in supporting keeping the tax rate at a single tax rate of 1, but I know for years, you know, Bridgewater's heavily, heavily relied on the residential tax rate. We still do, but at least we're starting to see a trend where that rate is coming down little by little, and hopefully in the future, we see more commercial development and we're able to gain the resources from those developments as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the counselors? Seeing none, I will now close the public hearing. And I'll entertain a motion to approve or entertain a motion to adopt a residential factor of 1. So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and there's a second. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, this does require a roll call vote.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson? Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Seven in favor, zero opposed.
Opposed. Okay. Thank you. We'll move on to Item G. We do not have any licensed transactions. Moving on to Item H, we do not have any presentations, so to speak. I am going to request or ask that we hold off on Item I for the moment. We do have many residents here tonight, and we do have our Economic and Development Director here tonight for Item J. Under discussion...
I'll make a motion to take J out of order.
Second.
There's a motion to take Item J, Discussions, out of order, and there's a second. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, that does require a roll call vote.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
And Suzie's saying that she's having a problem getting off mute.
Okay, so we got seven votes.
Seven votes.
Okay. So we now are acting under Item J, Discussions on our agenda. We have A and B. I will start with A. I will recognize Mr. Rulie from the planning director tonight, who will introduce a guest speaker, I guess we will call him tonight, but I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you, Mr. Gallagher. My office has had the privilege for the last semester to have Kelvin as an intern. Kelvin is an international exchange student on a State Department scholarship from Zimbabwe. One of his course requirements is public speaking, which I think you'll be incredibly impressed with. He's a confident public speaker. He's a fine young man, and I appreciate you giving him the time to speak tonight. Kelvin.
Thank you so much, Bob. And it is my honor and privilege to stand before you all tonight and give my presentation regarding my experience coming from Zimbabwe and here in America, as well as with the Community and Economic Engagement Office. In my journey from Zimbabwe, I had a lot of anticipations on what I would find in the United States, which is the land of dreams and opportunities. To be quite frank, I have found so many opportunities to learn, to work professionally and connect with amazing people who have helped open doors for me. It's quite different from Zimbabwe, actually. And as I landed at Boston Logan International Airport on the 29th of August this year, I went outside. I just wanted to confirm that the sign was shining the same as it did back home, to just find out if I had not landed on Mars or Planet Pluto, because it was just amazing. And when I noticed that the sun was shining the same, my mind was calm and my heart was at ease. And the first days we began classes with Dr. Kim at Bridgewater State University, she advertised jobs, opportunities, which she was willing to help us as Bridgewater students apply for. Unfortunately, I could not apply because I am on an exchange visit, as Bob has mentioned. But more fortunate enough, she connected me to the town of Bridgewater and the amazing Uncle Bob, Nicole Salvo and Thristi. Well, I call him Uncle Bob because in our culture as Zimbabweans, we are not allowed to call people who are older than us by their first names. If I do that, my mother would be pinching my ear right now. So yeah, I call him Uncle Bob. It has been a pleasure to be working with them. I have learned a lot from them, and they've given me lessons on housing and community development, how to engage the public, as well as life in general. He has just pointed me to the right direction, just the man I needed in my life to be a stepping stone to be where I am right now. And as a sustainable settlement policymaker and urban planner, having gone through the Town of Bridgewater Comprehensive Master Plan and the Vision to Reality Project, I have realized two of the most important qualities in today's world of the new urban agenda, that is smart settlement concepts and the way in which the policy is people-centered. Qualities such as the accessibility to the town's resources, harnessing economic development in a breed to bring more life to the town of Bridgewater are the best recipes for the success of Bridgewater. And the vision to reality, I must confess, it is an exciting phase in the development of Bridgewater, and I am excited to see this come to life. As I come to a conclusion, ladies and gentlemen, America has been different from Zimbabwe in a lot of ways, politically, economically, socially, and even the quality of life, not forgetting the weather and the food as well. It has made me a comprehensive global citizen, and I would like to thank the relationship between Bridgewater State University and the town of Bridgewater, which has met all this possible for me. And I have met amazing and wonderful people. I'm so thrilled to have met you all again today. Well, ladies and gentlemen, may God bless America and may God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We'll now move on to Item B, for Vision to Reality Update.
That's a tough act to follow.
Yeah.
From Uncle Bob.
Uncle Bob.
On.
We're going to all call him that.
Did I skip this?
Let little Bob go forward.
My assistant is bringing up the presentation.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for allowing us to give this update. I think it was 11 months ago that I first appeared before this group. I had just started in January, talking about where we thought we were going to go. We launched Vision to Reality as an official initiative in June. Quite honestly, it feels like it was three Junes ago in terms of what we've accomplished in the last six months. Very proud of what my team and our outside consultants have been able to do, but I just want to take this opportunity to kind of give an update on where we've been, what the next steps are, and then talk a little bit about some very critical next steps that we need to accomplish between now and February. If we go to the next slide, Michael, thank you. So in terms of community engagement, we've done a number of community meetings, small and large, culminating with the community workshop that we did in September. Quite honestly, I was nervous that we'd get 100 people. We had over 250 people. As I said, the website was launched in June. Since that time, we've been doing weekly emails. We've had 436 people subscribe to get those emails. I don't know that all of you are subscribers, but if you're not, you should be. We've had nine newsletters that go out, and in the off weeks, we have something called "Let's Talk," which is a white paper that I've been writing to discuss the various elements that we've discussed that are important with respect to the vision of reality. This gets a little techie here, and I'm not going to even begin to say that I understand what it means, but our consultant provided us this information. So our average open rate of those emails is 75%, which I'm told is very good. The clicks, that is averaging 58. That means that if there was a link within the email, somebody is clicking on that link. Our Facebook page for my office has presently 919 followers. Our reach has increased 145% in the last 28 days. Moving forward, to increase our reach with social media, will be taking over through my office, the town's Instagram account and potentially the town's Facebook account, which has almost 5,000 followers. So, Michael, if you could go to the next slide. So this is what the next, from now until February, looks like. So tonight, we're obviously having the update. The most important thing for this momentum to keep going forward is the adoption of the zoning amendments and the Form-based Code. the zoning amendments and the Form Based Code. And we've got an aggressive timeline for that. We'll be coming back at the first meeting in January, asking you to refer that to the Planning Board and the CED Committee, coming back on the 10th for a public hearing, I'm sorry, on January 10th, there'll be a special meeting of the Planning Board and the CED Committee to have a public hearing on the proposed zoning amendments and the Form Based Code. Coming back, they'll refer that to you in January 16th, with the idea that you would be able to adopt this at the February 6th meeting in 2024. Keeping in mind that we are obligated to meet the MBTA community's compliance zoning requirements by December 31st of 2024. If you've been paying attention to the Boston Globe, every week now, communities are making headlines because they're adopting their MBTA community's legislation. I still feel that what we're doing with Vision to Reality is 100% more comprehensive than any of these other communities are considering. At the same time as we're moving forward with the zoning, there are a number of infrastructure issues that we need to address. We're moving forward with the design and cost estimation for the relocation of the MBTA platform. We're continuing right now to look at the evaluation of New Wells, number five on High Street, and nine Carver Pond, or I might have got those reversed. We're gonna begin an evaluation for New Wells at Vernon Street. We have a meeting later this week with the Department of Corrections to talk about the reallocation of wastewater from Bridgewater State to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts assets at the Department of Corrections. And with respect to Central Square, we will be putting in a CDBG application after the 1st of the year for a facade improvement program for buildings in the Central Square area. With respect to community engagement, we're continuing to do our small business outreach. Our small business consultant, Tony Shartner, will begin having onsite monthly office, weekly monthly office hours Mondays from 12 to 2:00. We'll continue our small business workshops. We've done three so far. We're, our newsletter and our Let's Talk will continue. We're looking at another community workshop in March, similar to what we did in September. My office will also be starting a coffee with CED. We're gonna be holding those on the 4th Friday of every month at the Senior Center. And then we're also gonna start a quarterly Lunch and Learn Program, the first one being on January 17th. That will be at the library at noon. Next slide, please. So as I said, critical that we get the zoning amendments, and part of the zoning amendment is the adoption of the Form Based Code. The zoning amendment will bring us in compliance with the MBTA community's legislation. As I've said earlier, that legislation requires, at least on paper, that we have the ability to create 1,401 units of housing in the Central Business District. I want to be very clear, we're not gonna be building 1,400 units of new housing, but we have to at least allow that on paper, and we're satisfied that we're able to do that with, with the amendments. This is gonna encourage more mixed-use development. I heard Councilmember George talk about wanting to expand the commercial tax base. This is going to allow us to do this. The benefit of the Form Based Code is it's gonna give the community a very predictable outcome in terms of what can be built. It's going to give an advantage to developers that wanna take advantage of it, because it's an expedited approval process. If we go to the next slide, please. So in your handouts, you have this. I'm not gonna read all of this to you. I mean, these are what the standard of best practices are for the creation of a Form Based Code. I'll remind you that we were able to get a one-stop grant from the Governor's Office to have Horsley, Witten Group come in and work with Union Studios to develop and draft the zoning amendment and the Form Based Code. We expect that we're gonna have that first draft in the next week. Certainly, you're gonna see that before we have that referral to the Planning Board. The next slide, please, Michael. And again, these are, again, the best practices, so you can read those in your packets. We'll post this presentation to the Vision to Reality website tomorrow, as well as the town website, so members of the public can have an opportunity to look at it as well. Michael, next slide, please. Again, the zoning amendments and the Form Based Code that we're talking about now only pertain to the Central Business District. And this is not any other area of town, but our concentration in this area is twofold, that we have to meet the MBTA community's legislation requirement, but also that we identify that we wanna have the opportunity to preserve the remaining open space that we have in the community, where we don't have infrastructure in place. These are areas that we already have existing water and sewer available. Next slide, please. So in terms of what that Form Based Code will do, in terms of an expedited approval process, that would be an administrative approval. This is just page one of an 11-page checklist that an applicant would have to make sure all those boxes are checked. That administrative review or technical review would be conducted by my office, the building official, and a member of the Planning Board. Next slide, please. So I want to just give an example of kind of what, what does Form Based Code mean? What would that look like? So when I first started in January, this is what the applicant for the redevelopment of the Perkins Foundry site had presented. I was, quite honestly, and I was honest with them, I was offended in terms of what it looked like architecturally and aesthetically. And I shared that with them. I said, "This is not consistent with what I think the community's vision is," and I wanna, you know, step back and say, "Vision and reality is really just the culmination of what was contained in the Comprehensive Master Plan that was adopted by the Council in May of 2022, and all the other planning that happened before that." But none of this was consistent. I mean, this was, in my mind, and I think I said it then, was a Clarion Hotel, with no offense to a Clarion Hotel, but it really didn't represent what I think the community had in mind in terms of what development could look like. And, you know, we had some yin and yang back with the developer, but as we went through this process, we started to make some significant progress. And, Michael, if you go to the next slide. So now we have gotten to what, this would be a commercial building on Broad Street. This is much more in line in terms of what would be contained in the Form Based Code, architecturally, what we wanna see. We wanna see buildings that are facing the street. We wanna have commercial and retail uses on the ground floor with residential up. And one of the things we're including in the zoning amendment right now, the zoning requires that a building have 30% commercial or retail. I've stated this in previous meetings. We had a workshop on this. The market doesn't support that right now. As we develop more residential, the market might come back, but there, to require 30% retail or commercial, we'd have empty space, doubtful that it even could get financed. If you go to the next slide. So again, an improvement on what had been shown previously. We think that we can see more buildings of this design and architectural standard as we move up Broad Street and some of the other areas we've identified for redevelopment. And next slide. And then the rear building is, you know, kind of they're breaking up what that facade looks like to make it look like, you know, a city street. I will say that the proposal now before the Planning Board is for almost 90 units less than what the developer could do by right. But at the same time, they're trying to create amenities of access to the water, public space, green space, parking, and I'm very comfortable that, you know, this is more in tune to what we wanna see as a community as a result of Vision to Reality. Next slide, please. So we do have additional properties that are available. We've identified these as underdeveloped. 6088 Broad Street, we commonly refer to as the Friendly Site. I can say that in the last four weeks, there's been an incredible amount of interest from developers within Massachusetts and from outside of Massachusetts with respect to redevelopment of this site. And, but that's contingent on us getting the zoning approved so that they can do what they need to do to make the numbers work. In my experience, planning boards, councils, zoning boards have always been reticent to talk about the economics of a deal. You can't talk about a deal unless you talk about the economics of a deal. You know, the expedited approval process, time is money. As an example, the Perkins Foundry project has been two and a half years in process. In that time period, interest rates have gone from 3% to 7%. That adds a million dollars of cost to that development on an annual basis right now, if interest rates stay where they are. It's almost $2,000 per million in additional interest costs for that spread between 3% and 7%. So those are real things that are happening in the marketplace. And in addition to, you know, what we see happening with big-box retail, that's going away, supply chain issues. So our opportunity to get the Form Based Code approved, an expedited approval process, and have development that's consistent to what the community wants to see, but also gives the developer some certainty that they're gonna get a project approved, is a huge advantage to us. I think that's what differentiates, differentiates us from other communities that have said they've adopted an MBTA community zoning, but our zoning is much more comprehensive than that, and our initiative is much more comprehensive than that. If you go to the next slide, please. I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on Campus Plaza. We've talked about that quite often. Federal Realty has an interest in seeing this redeveloped. Next slide, please. 106 Hale Street is a parcel that's owned by the university. I've talked a lot in the past about the cybersecurity program that's emerging from the university. We've had some very meaningful conversations, helping the university understand how they can monetize that program. We see an opportunity to have a technology building that's privately owned on this site that could be jointly used by the university, professors at the university, students at the university emerging from that program, but also businesses that wanna take advantage of the cybersecurity range that the university is gonna be opening in January. The next closest cybersecurity range like that is in Rochester, New York. That's a huge advantage, not just for Bridgewater, the region, but the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. The next slide, please. And then the last, you know, parcel that we've identified is 1 Depot Street. We've talked about the relocation of the MBTA platform from its current location to the Spring Street Lot. This is immediately adjacent to the lot and the track, so we think that this is a prime site for redevelopment for housing. And again, we need to get the zoning in place to make that happen. Next slide, please. Additionally, what's happened over the last nine months is the Old Colony Planning Council has completed their Route 18 corridor study. I know that when we talk about redevelopment, there are concerns about traffic and what that impacts are gonna be, but if you look at this, with the exception of the intersection of Broad Street and Spring Street, currently, every intersection in Bridgewater in the downtown area is either an F or an E. So we can't even grade this on the curve and pass. The other thing that I'll point out is that when they look at improvements, they've looked at what we've suggested for improvements around Central Square as being critical to this being an important consideration to include, to make traffic better in this area. Next slide, please. And lastly, this is the proposed location for the relocated platform. We are working with Fussin' O'Neil and STV engineers who have done a significant amount of work with the MBTA. We know that the platform will fit within the Spring Street Lot, excuse me. Keolis, who operates the trains for the MBTA, has agreed to abandon the active siding that they have at this location, so there can be platforms on either side of the track. Keolis has also agreed to accelerate the improvement of the crossings of both Plymouth Street and Broad Street in anticipation of us making this change. So really, the expense will be for improved signals, and as we go through this with new developers and look at mitigation, we think there's an offset of, of funding coming in to cover that. So as we move forward, we've had the Vision to Reality. We had the logo that we came up with in the beginning. We're gonna maybe transition to something a little more contemporary as we go forward. We still know that there are a large member, a segment of the community that we're not getting at these meetings, but are interested in what we're doing. That's why we put the mailer out for people to be able to watch this online, either tonight or in the future. But, you know, we, rather than just have the long Vision to Reality, we're gonna go to VTR, so be prepared. Next slide, please. So, I mean, I do wanna say in closing that I'm incredibly appreciative, I didn't do this on my own by any stretch of the imagination, and this is not my plan. This is the community's plan. When I first had conversations with Michael Kimberly, Eric, and Mr. Chase, this was, you know, "We wanna make something happen, and how can we do this?" And I was willing to take that leap. I was comfortable with what I was doing where I was. But this was such an incredible opportunity, and to see where we've come from June to December is amazing. I mean, we've gotten published in the New England Real Estate Journal, Biz Hub, we have national publications wanting to know what we're doing. They wanna know what the Bridgewater story is. You know, our team of outside professionals, Tony Shartner Consulting, Fussin' O'Neil, Horsley Witten Group, Union Studios. But I'm also appreciative of all of you that allowed Michael and Kimberly to allow me to come on. We're just getting started, but, you know, again, we're at a critical crossroads right now that if we can get this zoning and Form Based Code adopted in the next two months, being well ahead of the December 24 deadline that we need for the MBTA communities and the funding that comes along with that, we're obviously continuously looking at other funding sources for downtown improvements, transportation improvements. We've just put in a grant with the university to continue to make sidewalk improvements. We've just put in a grant with the university for some transportation improvements. We're putting in another grant with the university for intermodal micro-transit in the downtown area, building off of what the university has with the students, what we're already doing with elderly, working with Brockton Area Transit. So there are a lot of moving pieces to what's going on right now. We wanna continue that momentum, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have or listen to any comments or suggestions that you have.
Thank you very much for that presentation. I'll open it up to the councilors for questions. So we'll go to Council Lindy first.
First of all, thank you for the comprehensive presentation. Very, very good, and I will agree with you 100% that you're student intern speaker. I teach speech, so he got an A+ for tonight.
It's untapped.
Yeah, this is, this, this, this is amazing. The March presentation, that, the March event that you're gonna have, is that an evening event?
We hasn't, we haven't scheduled anything yet. I just, you know, we're looking ahead, anticipating that, you know, we get the zone change done, we get the Form Based Code adopted, and that some development projects start to come forward. We just think that keeping the community engaged and involved is important, but not a date certain, not a time certain.
The only reason I'm asking that is I know, because of the 250 people that you had, and I was not one of them because I was sick, or I would've been there, I've been to all the other ones, as you know, I just wanna make sure that the public, our citizens, our constituents that elect us, are able to go to the events. I mean, it's great that some of them were at the Senior Center during the day when seniors could go, but the working people, that...
And I think that's, that's a fair observation. I mean, what we found was, you know, we've done direct mailers, and we send things home with the students and their backpacks from school. The exit surveys told us that was the most successful communication. But to your point, in what we're doing tonight, being able to livestream a meeting and setting it up, I mean, we know that that's important, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Counselor George.
Thank you, Mr. President. So just a few things. One, I am totally in support of changing the zoning to get some real worthwhile development downtown. Let's not forget about the Common as well. So anything that's going to help with that development, I'm all in favor of. But I do have a couple of questions. So you have in the presentation about the relocation of the, of the platform. Do we have an estimate on how much that's going to cost?
Yeah, we're, actually, we're waiting for a proposal from STV, who did the initial preliminary conversations with Keolis. I'm hoping that we're gonna have that in the next couple of weeks. I would expect by a March meeting, we'll have an estimate of what that cost is gonna be.
Okay. All right, obviously, that's gonna be a very important part of, not the zoning, but the process itself for the, for the development. Let me ask you this. If the platform wasn't able to move, would that adversely affect the future plans of the development of all the developers, you know, in the parcels and things of that nature?
It would for sure, because, you know, as part of the MBTA communities, we have to set a MBTA community zone, and that has to be within a half a mile radius of the platform. At the current location, there's no way that we'll ever meet the 1,400-unit requirement. So that's really what motivated us to look at the Spring Street Lot. But in terms of, I just wanna step back for a second. Terms of the cost of the platform relocation, you know, similarly to the Perkins project where... platform relocation, you know, similarly to the Perkins Project where we've got that developer to commit to make 10% of the units their deed restricted affordable, we've also got them as part of the mitigation, they've agreed to provide sidewalks along Broad Street to access to Siles and Hart. They've also offered to offset some of the expense potentially of the relocation of the platform. We think similarly, any of these other developments, particularly at Campus Plaza, we would be able to make that same ask of the development community, so we can minimize or eliminate that expense to the community.
Yep. And just the other thing I'm going to point out, but I want to preface it with this, I firmly believe regardless that the train station does need to move, even from a safety perspective, if anyone that's traveled 104 around school time, it is really just, it causes traffic, there are safety concerns. If we could keep the commuters on campus for the entire time they're there and not have to go over 104 to get to their parking, I'd be all for that as well. But I do have to say, when this first came to us a year ago, being mandated by the MBTA, I was none too happy to have them mandate that we were, you know, going to have to do adjustments on their terms versus ours. And again, I'm not saying we shouldn't, didn't sit well. I think yesterday, the town of Holden in the Massachusetts Superior Court, actually, the town of Holden was being sued, and the Mass Superior Court actually threw out the lawsuit in regards to an organization that was suing them because they have not decided if they're going to follow the MBTA community compliance, which doesn't surprise me because from what I've heard from other people in other towns, there are a lot of communities that are looking at it, not necessarily saying that we shouldn't develop, but we've been given, we were mandated that we would get an MBTA station. Now the MBTA is coming in and mandating that we have to do development to satisfy their needs versus ours. So I see the deadline here. I hope that maybe we watch that to see if we have some more time, maybe some more flexibility, so that once we decide what we're going to do, it's going to be for the benefit of Bridgewater, not to satisfy what the MBTA thinks that we need.
Absolutely.
So that would be my statement on that. Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Counsel Murphy.
Yeah, I just want to start by commending Calvin and thanking you for coming in and speaking. Thank you for that. I do have a question, it seems as though the entire presentation kind of hinged on the two big pieces of moving the MBTA platform and the form-based code. Could you talk a little bit about the alternatives, maybe just address Counselor George with the MBTA platform, but if the zoning does not get approved or does not go through, what are some next steps that we'll be taking to kind of ensure that this plan still moves forward?
So we submitted an action plan that said we were going to meet the compliance requirements. Again, if we look at the existing platform, Waterford Village has an approved 40R, which allows for additional density. That has existed for almost 10 years now, there's been no new development there. The fact that we can't count housing on the university campus and everything south of the platform is wetlands suggests that we're never going to meet the 1,400 unit requirement. And again, I don't anticipate we're ever going to build 1,400 units of new housing. But if we don't meet the compliance, you know, the suggestion is that you're going to miss out on funding for other infrastructure improvements or other things to help a community in terms of economic development. To Mr. George's point, unsettled as to, so if somebody doesn't meet that, what does that mean? You know, as an example, you know, Middleborough had initially said they weren't going to even begin to send in an action plan. The Attorney General sent a letter, they said, okay, we'll put in an action plan, but they're a select board. So I mean, the sense is, what happens when the select board in the town meeting, they say, we're not going to approve that? So what are the ramifications of that going to be? We don't know that. But at the same time, you know, I think what differentiates vision to reality in when working off of the MBTA communities is we're being very smart about how we're doing this. We're not just doing this for the MBTA. If you look at all the other elements that we talk about in terms of what is in the master plan and what we've articulated as what makes vision to reality work, it's transportation, it's housing, it's economic development, it's job creation, all of those things. So we're going to use that legislation to say, okay, we'll play along, but we have some real concerns. The manager and I have communicated this to the governor's office. Reallocating wastewater from the university is important for us because we, you can build 1,400 units, but we won't be able to have water or sewer for those 1,400 units. So I think, you know, some of that hasn't been balanced out by the state, but at the same time, I think there is an opportunity that, you know, we are suddenly seeing, as I said, interest in development projects, and we have a need for a certain housing product in town right now. So I think, you know, looking at keeping it where it is now is not advantageous to everyone, to Mr. George's point, students crossing the street. You know, if we can keep students on that side, and the MBTA has both lots, do some, you know, move the parking. And our idea of transit-oriented development is not that everybody's going to take the train. We think that a majority of people are going to be either taking a bus, the train, or micro-transit. We also think that there's an opportunity to develop a portion of the Spring Street Lot for either housing or commercial development, which would generate funds for the MBTA, because we're not going to use that entire lot. So I mean, there are a lot of balls in the air, but I think taking the approach that we're going to leave it where it is and it's going to be status quo is not the best way to move forward.
Could you just address the zoning piece?
So the zoning, I mean, really what we're, you know, we're, the only area that I think we're looking to create a lot more density is at the Campus Plaza site, because we don't have any residential neighborhoods immediately adjacent to that. But just being more flexible and understanding, and this is not a unique problem in the Bridgewater that, you know, we have as an example in Central Square, we have buildings that have zero lot line. The building takes up the entire lot, but we have a parking requirement. Well, that's impossible to meet. So that precludes developers or people looking at the reuse. So we want to look at how we can be more flexible, how we can create opportunities to have ground floor retail, commercial, residential up, put people on the sidewalk. You know, what can we do in terms of parking strategies, in terms of alleviating the perception we have a parking problem? You know, at the workshop, we had, I don't want to call it a raffle, but we had a contest, we had an overhead of Central Square and asked people how many parking spots there were available. Some of them were private, some were on streets, some were public. And we had people that said five, we had people that said 5,000, but we have almost 700 parking spots in Central Square. That's a lot of parking. So, you know, I always say we don't have a parking problem, we have a parking management problem, but these are all things that we need to look at comprehensively and holistically together, and that's what we're trying to do. So the form-based code might say, you know, we're going to allow you to build X number of units, we're going to reduce the parking requirement, if you can show us you can secure parking someplace else. This is a very walkable community, I don't want to say it's like a downtown, but it's like a downtown. If we were in Boston and you had, you know, that type of housing, you wouldn't have any expectation you were going to park exactly where you live. So I mean, those are things that we need to look at, freeing up the Spring Street Lot, somebody's a two-minute walk away and they can lease a spot there, I mean, that might be an alternative, but I think that's a better way to start going about this than, you know, just trying to, keeping it where it is, it's not going to work.
I still am going to push one more time. If the form-based code is not adopted by the planning board, what will be our next
I can't say what I told the manager of the next step. Probably a step backwards. As I said, you've got a lot of interest in sites now. I think the progress we made with the Perkins Foundry site is indicative that the development community is paying attention, but if this gets rejected, I think you're going to have people that are going to just say, you know what, I heard all along that Bridgewater was not development-friendly, and that's true, it's not development-friendly. That's not to say we should just cave into developers, but I think, you know, the form-based code is finding a balance between what the community articulated that they wanted to see in the comprehensive master plan and all of those elements, because I don't look at those individually, I look at those holistically, how they all fit together. You'll never get there, and you're going to have more of what you have now. And, you know, like the downside of this is, D'Angelo's closed, people said, well, that's because business was bad. No, D'Angelo's closed because he couldn't get help. It had nothing to do with business. But suddenly, that building is listed for $1.1 million. That's in anticipation of what people think is going to happen, and that's not a realistic number, but there is a lot of, there are a lot of eyes on Bridgewater right now, and what I'm hearing from developers, both from within the Commonwealth and outside, is, hey, we like this story, this seems like it's a good place to be. You have a university. I mean, that's a great thing, but I mean, some of that has been covered up for X number of years. So I mean, I think, you know, what we're trying to do is champion what exists here already and celebrate that.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other counsel, Counselor McKinnon?
Uncle Bob, it's been a week since, in January, was that the difference between when you got here and when I got here? So what are we looking at, day 320 now, something like that? Can tell you one thing, you have been doing the most work in the town, we appreciate that. I mean, I can't remember the last time there was a town, let event, that had over 100 people at it, let alone 50, you know. It's on. And I just appreciate all the work you've been doing, giving it all you can, and you're just trying to get things done. Like you said, this town might not be the most famously known for being development-friendly, and hopefully the form-based code hopes that out. I mean, speaking on the, you do a lot of work, I gave him a list of 11 things, I think, you just knocked three out of the park.
I mean, and I appreciate that. I mean, I just, you know, again, it's not just me.
Oh, I know, you're leading.
I have a whole team that helps this.
The CED Development is all doing well.
You know, I do know, and I just, I do want to address this, Brett, because I know you had a question with respect to Perkins Street and that project. That project has been approved, the self-storage has been approved by the planning board. There is a significant amount of environmental abatement that has to happen in order to take that building down. We don't have a hard timeline for when that's going to happen, but I can say that that's a national real estate company that's done this in many places with a reputable Boston law firm, so I'm comfortable that they're doing all the things behind the scenes to get the environmental approvals they need.
Just the asbestos siding and all that.
To do that. Similarly to Perkins Foundry, I mean, there is significant environmental concerns there. They've met all of those requirements from DEP and have gotten a go-forward, so that project can now move forward.
No, I've ironically done the roof on both of those pieces of property, and those places need to be cleaned up and just, we need to make our downtown better when you're driving through the train, if we're doing all this work for the MBTA and all that, so just appreciate everything you're doing. Thank you.
Counselor Chase?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thanks very much, Bob, for your presentation tonight. I think it's a good recap for us, it's a good view as to what progress has been made in 11 months and where we stand with respect to the next few months with important work to do. I think you made an important point when you referenced the fact that although part of what our plan is, is in response to a mandate from the Commonwealth, and it is, by the way, from the Commonwealth, not from the MBTA per se.
Correct.
The Commonwealth is trying to satisfy a housing initiative, and the MBTA is simply the mechanism through which they're enforcing this. So, but nonetheless, you make the important point that there are benefits as well. It's really a carrot and stick, and so we do need to comply and thereby avoid getting hit with the stick, but the carrot is, in our case, because we're contemplating other changes, significant other changes, it just dovetails very nicely, and it really maximizes the total impact that we should normally, that we should be able to expect to see from this development. So I think that it's a very positive step, and I think that the interest and the enthusiasm that I think it has generated already in the community has been something that in my 35 years in town I haven't seen in the past, I've commented on that before, and I think it's just a very promising prospect. So I'm very excited about it, and I think that the question with respect to what happens if in fact form-based code is not adopted, well, the answer is, I think you answered quite appropriately, it's what we have now, and you don't see a lot of development being initiated here now. So what would change? Not very much, I think. What we need to know, what I think everybody should just understand about form-based code is that it offers a high degree of predictability, which is just what developers are most concerned about, because obviously unexpected delays and whatnot are incredibly costly to a developer, and to have a degree of predictability that doesn't exist today would be enormously advantageous to the town. So I commend your efforts, I look forward to working going forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Perry?
Thank you. Again, a great presentation, Bob. Just again, it's, as been mentioned already, it's great to see the amount of progress being made over the past year so far. More of a statement that we will have the Downtown Community Revitalization Subcommittee having a meeting on the 14th, so we'll be going over the OCPC Route 18 corridor study, kind of finalizing traffic patterns and flow through the Common, and then also, as you mentioned in your presentation, I look forward to bringing the towns, building owners in the downtown area together to go over potential facade improvement program and really start putting a picture on what we want to do with the downtown area. So again, it's all coming together in a great, great way, and I look forward to seeing continued progress.
Me too.
Thank you. Thank you. Counselor Robinson is on Zoom, and she does have a couple of questions, however, her audio is not working. Through to the Town Council, is it okay if the Town Council Clerk read and ask those questions? Jason?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So go ahead, Deborah.
Her first question is, will we have the ability for public to weigh in on design of future buildings in the form-based code?
There will be a public hearing, a joint meeting of the public, of the planning board, and the CED Subcommittee of the Council to review what is in the form-based code, so the short answer is yes.
She also asks, break down the steps of approving Form FBC via planning board and CED.
So I think on the third page of the presentation, you know, we've given the timeline that on January 2nd, we're going to ask the Council to refer it to the planning board and the CED Committee. That would be the first reading of the amendment in the form-based code. On January 10th, there'll be a special meeting of the planning board and the CED Committee. Reporting out from that would be at the January 16th meeting of the Town Council, with the expectation that they would refer that for advertising, and with the goal to have the second and final reading and approval at the February 6, 2024 meeting of the Town Council.
And then she asked, any hurdles or concerns that might block that progress? How can council help with any barriers?
Always concerns. I think that, you know, the purpose of tonight was to say where we are, where we're going, that the sense of urgency is real because the opportunity is real, but it's not a desperate opportunity. So I think, you know, the more that the public and the council can stay engaged in the process and offer their feedback is critical to this being successful moving forward.
All right. And lastly, she'd like to suggest that the CED Committee, CED Department, and superintendent and school committee members meet to discuss and review plans. There are persistent concerns from citizens around capacity for the schools, and we should address that together.
Thank you. I'll have just a couple of questions, and again, I want to thank you for the progress that you've made these past 11 months, and we look forward to this continuing. And I'm glad to see that the Perkins Foundry property looks like it's moving right along, and I think it would be a great asset to the community, as well as getting some inquiries, serious inquiries, I guess, on the friendly property. But as has been discussed, is the, the big juggernaut to me, to bring a catalyst, to bring a spark to this whole thing, also is the moving of the bring a spark to this whole thing, also is the moving of the train station platform. And as you plan forward, I do think it's, it's worth taking a shot at, again, this is a state mandate, the state's telling us to do this, all the effort that your department has made over these last just 11 months, with more progress to be made in the, within the next four months. I think if we can show the state what we have done and what we've got going on with these projects, I'm hope that they, and if you do get commitments through, through mitigation from some of these developers, to help pay for that move, and we can show the state, hey, look, we've got private partners willing to help us pay for this, but that's just not enough. A public-private partnership to pay for this would be much helpful to this community. I don't know if the taxpayers of this community really have the appetite to pay the balance of that bill. I'm not sure. I can't speak for them, but I don't know what the cost is going to be for that. You said you'll have that within a month or so. So, I just think it might make it worthwhile to begin the process of reaching out to our legislative delegation, perhaps to file something at the state level to help us with this moving of the train station, showing, though, at that time, that we have some private, a private partnership with some of the developers willing to pay whatever that amount is. So, that's, you know, I'm sure you probably thought of that. Special legislation is filed all the time on Beacon Hill. You're right, the success rate is not that great, but it's worth a shot.
No, and, and quite honestly, and, you know, the manager, assistant manager and I have weekly meeting, our number-one frustration, I think collectively, is the inability for us to connect with state leadership, that, you know, you have this MBTA communities legislation, you're talking about that you have a housing crisis, and, you know, we're checking every box that you have, probably more than any other community, and somehow we're in the abyss. We can't even get an acknowledgement that we're doing all of the things that you're asking us to do. You know, you're asking us to do something, and we don't have the infrastructure capacity. So, I mean, we've been leaning on our elected officials at the state level and even at the federal level, because, and again, as I said earlier, what we're doing, no one's doing anything this comprehensive, and it's unfortunate that we're not getting that acknowledgement from the state. And I'm all for doing whatever we can do to make sure that they are paying attention to what we're doing.
Right.
You know, to your point, I mean, our goal is to not have this be an expense of the taxpayers. You know, we can look at examples that if Campus Plaza is able to be redeveloped, can we create a business improvement district in that area, that that revenue could offset this? So, there's a lot, number of options out there. And as I said, you know, we're juggling a lot of balls at the same time, and I'm comfortable that we're going in the right direction. But my number-one frustration is the lack of acknowledgement from the state in terms of what we're doing.
Good point, well taken. Thank you. And thank you for that presentation once again. We'll, oh, go ahead, follow up.
Just ask one more quick question. Bob, are we the only community that you know of that's explored the option of moving the, the platform or train station? I just find it unusual that Bridgewater would be the only in this situation.
As far as I know, we, Michael and I are both on the MBTA Advisory Board. We had a meeting today. We heard communities talking about relocating bus stops.
Yeah.
But we have not had, I haven't heard of any other community talking about relocating the platform. And, and I think some of you know the history of why the platform is there. It should have never been there. But in terms of, and, and I, you know, one thing that I'm encouraged by that we learned today is that the representative we met with the MBTA that gave us the go-ahead to talk about moving the relocation has now been promoted to be Chief Operation Officer for the MBTA. So, that's an advantage that we have too, that we know Ryan. I mean, we've, we've met with him and worked with him, so. But again, we're somewhat with a hand behind our back because we don't have anybody at the state advocating for us for what we're doing.
Thank you. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we will now move back to item I on the agenda, the Town Manager's Report. He has had plenty of time to get ready for this, so here we go. I'll refer to the Town Manager under High Street Bridge Project Update.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President. I was very busy trying to manage the PowerPoint, so. First, on the, on my report, High Street, an update on High Street Bridge. I think, as you know, if you've driven down, the bridge is open. There are, excuse me, several more months of work to do down there, but there is tentatively planned ribbon cutting for a date in late spring. We don't know exactly when, but sometime in late spring, in, in June, early June, perhaps, we anticipate a ribbon cutting for the completion of the bridge. So, any questions? Happy to answer any questions about that.
Any questions from the councillors to the Town Manager on the High Street Bridge update? No, we'll move on to the winter preparations.
Winter preparations, so hopefully, this isn't too timely, as last I saw, we had potential storm coming our way. But we do, we are set for winter. We have commitments from 45 contractors, which is sufficient. That's not anywhere near the 75-plus plow contractor, contractors we used to field over a decade ago, but, but our roadway superintendent feels that we are sufficiently prepared. Just so the council knows, we pay equal to or slightly higher than most towns. We, we are not the highest payers. So, we, we don't believe that, that the lack of plow drivers is any lack of, or is, we believe the issue is the lack of interest, not the lack of payment. If you see communities, as well as state governments, still advertising for plow contractors, that is not uncommon. So, I think in many cases, there's just, just a lack of, of interest in doing the work. It's hard work. It's grueling work, but, but the, the payments that, that we are proposing are, are in line with, with what other communities are paying. We do, we do know that contractors have to pay municipal insurance, which is an additional cost for them to be able to do plowing work. And for the past couple of years, we've, we've paid a bonus for signing up and then responding to each event. Obviously, last year, I think we had one or two plowable events, so very few contractors at the end of the winter get a bonus, and we're trying to make that bonus roughly equivalent to what we know they're going to have to pay in additional insurance. So, so we do provide some incentives there, but I think bottom line is, we are as ready as we have been over the last few years to go, and hopefully, winter will be relatively, relatively calm again this year. But happy to answer questions about that.
Any questions to the Town Manager on winter preparations? Seeing none, we'll move on to the Oak Street Bridge Update.
Oak Street Bridge, well, I'll give you a little bit of update on Oak Street and also the Oak Street Bridge. So, back, I believe it was 2015, 2014, I think most councillors know that we had a car accident on the Oak Street Bridge. It disrupted the guardrails that were there, and we had to close it for a period of time. Mass DOT with some, after some town temporary repairs, Mass DOT allowed us to make it a one-lane bridge, stop on both, in both directions. That's the way it's been since then. The state has a grant program that will fund bridge, essentially, it's a culvert replacement, but that'll, small bridge replacement project for spans that are 20 feet or less. Oak Street is obviously, I believe it's 60 or 70 feet, I, I don't remember off the top of my head. That did not qualify for any state programs. Right now, we are pressing the state, well, let me back up. So, back then, a, a fix would run about $750,000. Today, the cost of that, that fix would run about $1,006,000, based on updated, updated estimates. A replacement, which is more apt to be grant-funded, would cost about 2.5 to 4 million to replace that, that bridge in its entirety. So, essentially, today, 1.6 for town-funded repair, a 2.5 to 4 million dollar for a complete replacement that, that we would hope could get funded through MassDOT grant or a federal grant, if, if those were available. So, we continue to look for federal funding as part of the infrastructure program. Again, there's a lot of money out there, but it is, it is very focused and, and tries to accomplish what the politicians in DC want us to accomplish with that, what they want local communities to accomplish with that money. And Oak Street Bridge just doesn't fit any of these, any of these particular programs. So, we, we continue to, to look for the money, and I think eventually, we'll twist enough arms that, that we'll get some grant funding there, but it may take some time. I think there was a question about water sewer pipes. Anytime we do any kind of infrastructure problem, project, DEP, I'm sorry, DPW, Public Works will make sure that any water pipe replacement or sewer pipe replacements that are, that are contemplate, or are needed, will be contemplated as part of the project. The street is serviced by town water, and it is likely that that water pipe would be replaced when we do any significant work on Oak Street. And there is a very tiny stretch of Oak Street that is actually on the sewer system, but Oak Street is not a designated needs area, according to our Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan. So, that would likely not be, no additional pieces of oak would be tied into the sewer system anytime soon. So, so that's an update on Oak. I know an overlay is on the DEP, sorry, I keep saying DEP, on the DPW list for Oak Street, obviously, for those that have driven up and down there while the, the High Street Bridge has been closed, have enjoyed a, a bumpy ride, and, and we hear about that. So, that is, the overlay is on the agenda for DPW, but, but a full-depth repair, a full-depth replacement and, and the bridge are also out there, but need to be grant-funded in some, one way or another. So, happy to answer questions about that one.
Questions from the councillors? Go ahead, councillor McKinnon.
Is the lack of a sidewalk a problem for grant funding?
Actually, the lack of a sidewalk actually improves our chances for grant funding because we, we are going to propose a sidewalk for Oak Street. I think anybody that drives down or walks down knows that we need a sidewalk on Oak Street. It's a residential neighborhood. So, that actually sort of checks off a helpful box for us when we're looking for grant funding, because, you know, we're looking at multiple different transportation modes, car, as well as walk, so it does help us.
Do you think we could just keep it one lane, do a sidewalk in the future? I mean, that road's horrible. We need, it needs to be taken care of. Flag and cross should be ahead of it, but the other three, in my opinion, shouldn't have been. That road's been that way for a while, and I can see people not having a problem with that staying one-lane bridge if the road gets fixed. That'd probably save the town a lot of money, put a sidewalk on it, and then just make it a Vermont Bridge, you know, a tunnel bridge, or New Hampshire, we don't do the tunnel, but you get what I'm saying. Give it that idea. Because that, it is pretty expensive now compared to what it was 10-plus years ago.
Yeah, no, that, I, I think at this point, we would entertain any, anything on Oak Street that accomplishes, you know, a better drive and pedestrian accessibility. So, if that means continuation of the, of the one-lane bridge, yeah.
I, I drive down it a lot, because I live right there on Spring Street. There's not many times where, I mean, I, I do slow down. It's my friend's house right there, but most people never even stop there, no matter what, because they don't see a car. I really don't see it being that much of a problem if that stays one-lane, because that, that bridge is structured, structurally, it's fine, isn't it?
It is.
It's just a guardrail got banged into, and we put Jersey barriers up.
Yep. No, it's a good, I mean, it's a beautiful bridge. You don't see the bridge when you drive over it, but, you know, it is a beautiful old bridge. So, it'd be great to fix it the right way, but, but to your point, I think if, if we had a fix for Oak Street that involved paving and it also involved sidewalks, that we would go ahead and do that and live with the one lane.
I'm just, I think it's a good idea. I mean, it's good, we have a conservative budget here. You do pretty well with that. You bring money over the next year. I really do think that should, that should be one of the next top five towns that we have for the 2025 year, since we're doing those ones in 2024.
As soon as, as soon as we get our 2024 road list, our, our regular Chapter 90 list, I'll let the council know. That hasn't been determined yet, but as soon as we, we have it, we'll let, let everybody know what that is. Thank you.
Councillor Perry?
No, thank you. Yeah, just as an extension of that, I know, again, you're, you're trying to find funding and grants for it, but obviously, it seems like in this timeframe, the, the cost is, is doubled material-wise and work-wise to fix this. Is there any type of timeframe we're, we're setting up on this to say, well, if we can't find the grant funding, can we find some funding within the town to do what we can to, to repair it at the smaller number? Does, again, because it definitely is, is a need, I, I would like to see it, you know, if we can, open up two ways again, because it is, you know, difficult to pass it one, one car at a time there. And again, as the rest of the roadwork, and it being done with it, and hopefully, at a similar time, would be a great plan. But again, just, is there a timeframe that we're looking at to, to limit, you know, the, you know, how much time we're going to wait further for, for funding and grants of that nature?
So, I, I think we, we are always looking for grants, always filling out grant applications and submitting them. I do think it'll be, it'll be very helpful for the council to see our capital improvement plan. You should be seeing that your first, first meeting in February, we'll, we'll come and give a presentation on the capital needs that, that the town has. And, and quite honestly, you know, we don't jump up and down and scream about it, but roads are, are, at this point, we've got about a $38 million estimate for comprehensive roadwork, obviously, and I think, I think councillor Gallagher has talked about this, we're not going to go out and ask taxpayers to fund $38 million worth of roadwork in a year, but we do have to, and we are coming to you with a plan, you know, a plan to both fund the roadwork and, and show you exactly what funds are available from what source. So, I think, I think how Oak Street Bridge fits into that will be something that, that you'll see on, on the first week in, in February, the first meeting in February. And you'll probably see that either next meeting or your January meeting with the DPW Director, just giving you an overview of the road plan that we're formulating. So, that's coming.
Thank you. Any other questions on the Oak Street Bridge? Next item is Rainbow's End.
Excuse me. Rainbow's End, as I think I told the councillors, the council a while back, cleanup has, the EPA has agreed to fund and manage the cleanup. It is on state properties. Just a lot of quirks in state law say, say that the, the state can't grant, grant funds to itself in order to, to solve its problems. So, through a little bit of, I guess, legal maneuvering, the EPA has agreed to take that project over with input from the DEP and a little bit of input from the town as well. Very likely will be over a million-dollar total cost on that cleanup, but the steps that DEP has to go through, and it is essentially a DP, DE, now I'm saying DPW for DEP. It's a DEP relationship with EPA. We're largely out of that, out of that process, but I can tell you, the DEP submits what's referred to as a quality assurance project plan. That was anticipated to be submitted to EPA actually last week. I got an update week, two weeks ago. So, that should have been submitted last week, and based on EPA's approval of that quality assurance project plan, DEP is hoping to start additional ground assessment, which is additional testing in January and February to determine the volume of soil that will actually have to be removed from that site. So, all, any work, any and all work performed by, or on behalf of EPA involving environmental operations there are implemented according to that approved quality assurance project plan. It's sort of the roadmap for what has to happen on a particular piece of property, and, and all, all action sort of stems from that. And so, that gives you the timeline I know about at this point. I imagine that once the determination is made about how much soil has to be removed from the site in January and February, I would anticipate some RFP going out from EPA, the federal government, sometime after that, whether it's late spring or early summer, somewhere in, in that timeframe, is my guess. I don't have a commitment on that. I don't have a commitment on that. So happy to, happy to answer questions on that one.
Any questions on Rainbow's End? Councilor George?
Thank you. Mr. President, through you to the town manager. So correct me if I'm wrong, but the property is under the authority of the DOC, correct?
The property is owned by the DOC, excuse me. The town has a license, a five-year renewing, constantly renewing license for the use of that property, but it is owned by the DOC.
Are there, in general, are there any restrictions on that property in connection with potential public use after it gets cleaned up?
After it gets cleaned up, the only restriction would be, and the DOC has been pretty amenable, but would be DOC approval of whatever use the town might want to make of it.
Okay. So I mean, in the spirit of that agreement, if we decide to move forward in something that's going to be accessible to the public, we probably would not have an issue with them agreeing to letting us move forward?
That's my guess without asking them directly, but that's my guess. They've been very amenable.
Because I know we've thrown around a few different ideas and I would just like to set expectations that once the EPA and the DEP go through the mitigation process of of cleaning up the site, that we do have, within reason, the ability to guide the future use of that, be it a dog park, maybe we'll name it after Councilor Gallagher, or or something, or maybe, maybe another, maybe another playground or something like that. But for the most part, without getting into commitments, we feel fairly confident that we'd be able to move forward on something like that, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilor McKinnon?
Just want to note, the town could use a dog park or a community garden and that would be a pretty good location.
The, completely agree with both of those. The community garden might require some removal of pine trees, although I think part of the cleanup effort will involve removal of a number of pine trees in there, but either use is, I'm all for.
You also said you weren't sure how far down they're going to need to dig.
So I think that's part of the testing that DEP is going to perform, January, February is like, it could be, they've said it could be six inches, it could be two feet, just doesn't, they don't know.
All right. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, move on to item E, demolition date of self-storage facility on Perkins Street.
So I think Mr. Ruli addressed this one a little bit. The planning board's approved that. We know that the, that the applicant or the owner now is, has to do a lot of abatement, environmental abatement, so they have not, they have not pulled a demolition permit as of, as of today. So so that's, that's about what I got on that one.
Councilor McKinnon?
Besides the asbestos shingles and all that, what, do you know how many other environmental problems they have there?
I don't. My complete guess is certainly asbestos removal, which is time-consuming, labor-intensive, you know, and very possibly lead paint issues, but.
Right. Thank you.
Any questions to the town manager on the demolition? Seeing none, we'll move on to F, Town River Landing update.
So we have, obviously, Mr. Laserta and with a lot of help from other folks that are in this room, has, have done a lot of work down at Town Landing. And one of the things we've talked about to, at some length, is adding a pavilion or some sort of gazebo that can be a covered space for activities that that go on down there. And and so we have tried to approach Home Depot and I'll be uncharacteristically blunt, Home Depot has been very unresponsive. So after repeated attempts to get a hold of them or or see them, we've been out there as well. So we've reached out to Amazon, looking for Amazon and Amazon's corporate foundation, possibly to fund some improvements there. We've also spoken with Bristol Plymouth Tech School about doing actual construction using this as a, as a student job. We've had very good luck with BP for a couple of different projects in town, including Senior Center, the police station. They've done really good quality work for us. So so that is, so we've been in discussions with them. We're also looking at a couple of different grant funds through the state to fund either the entire project, if we can get sufficient funds, or at least materials so that Bristol Plymouth, if we can get Bristol Plymouth to schedule this for their early spring materials for Bristol Plymouth because the town would be on the hook for the materials. So there's a community placemaking grant and also a shared streets and spaces grant through Mass DOT and we're looking at both of those. And I think we've got a meeting coming up with Mr. Laserta and Councilor McKinnon to kind of flesh out the timelines on those. So so that is in the works. And then, and then just as an aside, I think we'll be coming to the council probably later in the, in the spring, possibly in the summer, looking to sort of bifurcate that property and dedicate the the lower piece to park use, parkland use, which will make it eligible for a lot more funding through the parks, state parks grant program. And that, that'll be coming up. That's largely an administrative task that won't change anything, the look of it or the, or anything else, but will allow us to be eligible for more grant funding in the future.
Any questions to the town manager on the Town River Landing update? Go ahead. Councilor McKinnon?
What do you think would be easier for the town to do the gazebo and have BP go in there and do it, or should we go off of Abington's design, which would require a kit?
So I think, you know, basically what we've talked about internally is trying to mimic the Abington design. That, just for everybody's knowledge, Abington built very similar pavilion, well, similar to what we are looking at and actually exactly what we would like to do. It's a pavilion, it's roughly, I think it's 40 feet by, 20 by 40, something like that. And and so that is what we would like to replicate down at Town River Landing. All doable. Right now, what we're talking with BP about is replicating that same design, but not requiring it as a kit with, you know, all the metal support pieces that come with, with that kit. So instead of, you know, using that exact kit, getting it designed, something that looks just about the same and then and then going with BP on that one.
Well, BP would be the best way to go, in my opinion, for sure. My little brother did that when he went, I mean, he built the thing behind the police station, you know? It's, it's great for the kids and it's great for the town, too.
Well, the beauty of of this particular project is that it's, you know, it's away from the hustle and bustle, so it's, you know, there's no conflict using building while you're trying to work on it. And it's, it's essentially sort of a, an uber framing kind of job. So it's, it's something that I think would be right up their alley, teaches kids, you know, framing, you know, you know, the framing those, those types of buildings, you know, the post and beam type building. And so, so, yeah, so we're optimistic that we can get something done. And I'm very optimistic we can get grant funding to cover either the whole cost of of hiring a contractor to build it or at the very least getting the materials, paying for the materials and getting Bristol Plymouth to do it.
It'd be good because East Bridgewater and West Bridgewater are both taking the First Responder Day resolution and copying it word for word. And we're going to try to get, make it into a tri-town event. So that would be good if we had that there for the last Saturday of April.
Excellent.
That's about it for me. Thank you.
Any other questions on the Town River Landing? I have one question. I would rather see a pavilion than a gazebo. I think it would better fit what events they might want to have down there. I think the, the pavilion at the pickleball court is why I envisioned something like that to go in down there. But I do have another question. If my memory serves me correctly, when we tore down the highway barn, there, in that appropriation to do that work, there was some money put aside to perhaps pave the area of where the barn was, and I believe that money is still available. Is it possible that that may be used? I attended, and I know some others did well as well, I've attended events down there during this past year and and I was down there Saturday at the Garden Club green sale. The, the road needs to be some serious, and I don't want to say patchwork, but some serious work to be done. Is it possible that perhaps during this whole, you know, pavilion reconstruction area, that some of that money could be used to make that road a little more, less dangerous in the sense of some potholes and things down there?
We have, yes, the short answer is yes. We've talked a little bit about, about, you know, people twisting their ankles in in potholes and talked a little bit about filling those. I know Paul DeCosta, I think, went down and filled some, but but that money is there. I believe it's $50,000. And and conversations with Councilor McKinnon and and Mr. Laserta, you know, I think, I think we can incorporate that later in in a, whatever we end up doing in terms of of reconfiguring parking or or, you know, trying to create sort of a rational parking plan that fits in with the use of of that property.
Excellent. Thank you. Go ahead.
I do just want to note, too, you can look this up, I live right there. Since we've done all this work, people have been down there, people are enjoying it. I've lived on Spring Street since I was 12 and then again from 19 to me now being 29. I've lived there just about all my life. This is the best it's looked and the sky's the limit for back there, it really is. And especially if everything happens at College Plaza, that will just help the community.
Absolutely.
Building events and all that.
Yeah. No, we've, we've had discussions, as you know, we've had discussions about what future events could be there. You know, it's, it's perfectly located as, as, you know, as outdoor event, you know, venue and it's, it's right by the river. So it's got all kinds of pluses going for it and and quite frankly, it's amazing that you've got grass to actually grow there and look good. So, so that's, that's impressive in and of itself.
Appreciate that.
That's it for me.
Okay. Everybody's all set with that? And G, the energy aggregation update?
Energy aggregation, Colonial Power did reach out to me last, a couple of weeks ago. They have delivered this, the standard plan document and that standard plan document gets posted for a month's time, filed with the clerk's office. And then after that month's time gets, comes back to the council, a few weeks after that for a council vote to accept the standard plan document. And again, this is standard plan document, which essentially outlines what the council's ideas are and the town's ideas around municipal aggregation. It's basic, it's, it doesn't account for all the details that we'll want to see and I'll get to that. So it's the basic standard plan document, as I said, is subject to public comment for over a month and then subject to a town council vote several weeks after that. So I anticipate, let's see, December, January, probably into February, you will actually have a vote to endorse that plan, standard plan document. After that, Colonial submits that to the state DOER for discussion and consultation is what they call it. After that consultation, which there's no particular timeline on that, you know, at least several weeks, it is then submitted to the state's DPU and the state's DPU has to approve our standard plan document. That can take, Colonial gives us two-year timeframe. I know that there are towns that have been out there for three years waiting for DPU action. That's a whole political issue, but that does take some time. So we'll be using that time to start having internal discussions about what kind of products the town wants to offer its residents in terms of electric service. And then once DPU does make, does approve that plan, the ball is back in the town's court and the, and the Colonial will work with me and work with the council and the energy committee to determine exactly what kind of options we want to offer the electric customers. So after that, it goes out to RFP and then energy producers bid on on what we've issued as an RFP and we go on on from there. So so it's a bit, it is a bit of a process. I can forward out and we'll put on the website exactly the the process as Colonial's laid it out for us. But that's, that's the update on on where we are right now. So happy to answer questions.
Questions? Councilor Lindy?
So throughout this whole process, will, will be your office and then ultimately us, will be working with the energy committee on this?
Well, yep, we'll be working. So energy committee is obviously more perfectly situated to determine or recommend to the council what products we want to see offered to our electric customers. So, yep.
Thank you. And I have just a question. Can I ask at this point, is it appropriate to you to ask the town manager for an item for the next meeting?
Sure.
I'd like to ask that we get an update on what's going on with the mobile station project, you know, in light of the fact that it's there and what's next?
Yep.
When I didn't use my microphone.
Any other questions for the town manager on the energy aggregation update?
Not on that. I got a request.
You want to add something?
Oh, I got requests.
Go ahead. What do you want to add?
All right. So I got a few, but I'm only going to ask two and one might just be as simple as a discussion. The fire station bid, by that time will be December 19th, a month after the bid final date. No disrespect to the three gentlemen that was up here, but they came in here, they had the, it showed you what the carpet, the wall was going to look like. We should have a con, we should have the bid done by then. So hopefully that's what we hear on that day. Second thing, me personally, five of my friends missed a train there this week. If the president was here, he'd tell you he missed it one day. I'm not complaining, but I'd like to know what happened with the college and why they made the deal with Keolis or however you pronounce them for the 180 parking spots because just, like I said, I know five people that did, one missed it twice, Eric missed it, and there was a whole thing on Facebook and there were a lot of pissed off citizens about that. So that's just something that'd be good to hear out of your mouth instead of any of our mouths.
Yep. No, that, I think that does deserve some public airing, so so I will definitely bring that up.
And then the one last thing I have to ask that could just be a discussion right now is did the sale of 330 Bedford Street fall through? Or did that happen?
Is that the old?
The old Frank's, yeah, to Frank's property, yeah.
I don't, I have not heard any update on that because last I heard, the building inspector had, had let me know that that there was somebody who was in line to purchase it, had, was under a purchase-sale agreement and the first thing he was going to do once he secured ownership was clean up the trash. So obviously that hasn't happened, so I'll check on that.
Thank you. That's it for me.
And if anyone else has anything they would like on, under the town manager's report, you can always email Deb and let her know. Does, does Suzie have a question?
She does have a question for.
Go right ahead.
She wanted, it's about the vision to reality. She wanted to know if the Gantt approaches is being used. She says contingencies and dependencies and it would be good to have this formally organized? Gantt tool?
Gantt tool, the Gantt chart, yes. Internally, we are developing more detailed plans for post, what we hope will be a post-successful zoning change. Right now, all focus is on the form-based code and getting that zoning approved, but after that, we are, we are working on a more detailed plan and how the, how the council fits into that, how we fit into that and how citizens fit into that.
Okay, again, if anyone has anything they want under the town manager's report, just to reach out to Deb between now and before the agenda is finished for our next meeting, which is a couple of weeks. We've already done item J, item K. We have no committee, are any committees that wish to give a report tonight? Moving on to legislation, L, legislation for action. The first order is FY 24015 Sewer Enterprise Fund. The Budget and Finance Committee voted three to zero to recommend at their meeting on 11/21/23 and the Finance Committee met last evening and they also voted seven to oh to recommend to the council.
Motion to approve?
Second.
There's a motion to approve and a second, any discussion? This does require roll call vote.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
And Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson votes yes. Am I allowed to take it from?
Yeah, that's fine.
So it's eight in favor, zero opposed.
Excellent. Item B, Order F Y 24016, Transfer Order, Sewer Wastewater Treatment Facility, Phase One. The Budget and Finance Committee voted three to zero at their meeting on November 21st, and the Finance Committee met last evening and voted seven to zero to recommend.
Motion to approve?
Second.
There's a motion and there's a second to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, this does require a roll call vote.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson votes yes. Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
And Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
And item C, Resolution R 24003, Town Council Meeting Dates. This resolution was not referred to any committee in 14 days has elapsed, therefore it may be considered this evening. You have in your packet a list of all the, all the meetings.
Motion to approve?
All 22.
Mr. President, so we received an email today from the town clerk that the state primary is going to be on September 3rd, 2024. Historically, I don't believe we had a, we would have a town council meeting on the same day. I'm not saying it prohibits us from moving forward on this, but we may want to consider changing that date fairly quickly if we so feel that way, to not conflict with the, with the election.
A point well taken. I guess we can do that tonight, or, you know, as it gets closer to the summer, we could look at that. But since we know it's going to be the 3rd, I don't think that date's going to change.
Right. I'd like to propose that we bring this, we bring this up for discussion at the next meeting, and I'd like to have people consider maybe moving it to the 4th, that Wednesday. Or, well, probably, probably the 4th, that Wednesday, because Monday is Labor Day. So we can discuss that further, but I just wanted to put that out before, you know, before we move forward on it.
All right. So let's put this on for December 19th for discussion about the meeting days, particularly September 3rd's date. And we could all, we've had back-to-back meetings, not two days in a row, but week to week. We've done that before. So we could go to the 10th and the 17th. We could do that.
A question through you to the town attorney. Do we have to approve this tonight?
No, you can make a motion to continue it to the next meeting and...
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to continue it to the next meeting and have discussion around the 3rd.
Yeah, we have to kind of vote at least the January meetings at the next meeting, though. At least, though we know when.
Yeah. I mean, I think, I think either way, even if we vote to approve it tonight, I will have that discussion at the next meeting, either way.
I'll second that.
Okay. There's a motion and a second to have this on the agenda for next?
For the 19th.
For the 19th. Any discussion on that? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson voted yes. Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
And Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
Okay, we will see this again in two weeks. Old business, there is none. New business is three things. Under N, new business, Order F Y 24018, Establishing the Town Manager Goals. I think you have that in your packet. This is new business. I would refer to, you want to explain, you want to go over or just refer it out?
I probably, well, I'm not sponsoring it, so.
Oh, I mean, where is my?
It's Eric, but.
Eric, he's not here, all right.
I mean, I...
This really just needs to be referred to the Strategic Planning Committee.
Right. And I, just to give the public and I just an overview, this will be establishing the town manager's goals in regards to adoption of a resolution on a go-forward basis, so that we can get this aligned, hopefully with the town manager's annual review as well.
I'll make a motion to refer to Strategic Planning.
Second.
There's a motion and there's a second to refer to Strategic Planning Committee. Any discussion on the motion? This requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Vote yes. Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
And Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
Item B, Order F Y 24019, Eminent Domain Order of Taking of Two-Lot Parcels on Broad Street. You have the order in your packet. This needs to be referred to the Budget and Finance and Finance Committees.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and there's a second. Any discussion on the motion to refer to committee? Seeing none, that does require a roll call vote.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson votes yes. Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
Item C, Order F Y 24019.
If I could, just on that last one, very quickly, just when it does come back for final approval, if we can just have a page for each one of the counselors to sign and for me to be able to notarize, because that will have to be recorded at the Registry of Deeds. Thanks.
Thank you. Item C, Order F Y 24020, Acceptance of a Gift from the Low Peak Trust. Did I get that right? No? I don't know. Anyway, this is a generous gift from the Low Peak Trust, and I will request that this be referred to the Budget and Finance and Finance Committee.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and there's a second. Any discussion on the motion to refer to committee? Seeing none, this does require a roll call vote.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson votes yes. Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
And Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
Very good. Now we move on to item O, Citizens' Comments. Are there any citizens here that wish to speak during the Citizens' Comments portion of the meeting? Any citizen here that wish to speak under the Citizens' Comments portion of the meeting, please come up to the microphone and state your comments.
James Moore, 70 Grove Street. James Moore, oh, there it is. Okay. James Moore, 70 Grove Street. This is my first time coming here in a long time. I used to record the meetings of the selectmen, as you remember, a long time ago. And I must say that this is a very well-organized and expeditious and thoughtful and well-managed from all departments to the counselors themselves. Organization, well-run. I'm very impressed with the acuity of the thinking and the questions and the responses, and it makes me very, very happy. That's all. I just thought you might want some good response, or, you know, I'll have some others later. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Thank you.
Any other citizens' comments? Yes.
Girl, Austin Street. Good meeting. I have a couple of things on the form-based code. Possibly you could add it to the town manager's report, but I'd like to get a little bit more on what towns have adopted that code, and the reasons why, and why they may have rejected it. Because I know of a couple of towns that have rejected it. And I think it's a good code personally, but I think we ought to hear a bit more about that at the next meeting. Thank you. In fact, the specialized code that you guys are going to be looking at, hopefully, next meeting, we don't need buildings in town that are energy hogs. We need energy-efficient buildings. And I'm hoping, but I haven't been contacted yet, about how the specialized code would fit into the form-based code. I think those go hand in hand. And that would be a zoning change also, so putting those together. The last thing, I'll remind the council that there is a park in town that has not been used. It's the Jenny Leonard Park, out off of Cherry Street. There was a development that was done that put in a parking lot for it. I understand that the planning board, a couple of planning board members and Mr. Ruley have walked it, and it's been cleaned up, pathways are there, but it needs some T L C, tender loving care, to make it actually usable. So I'd like you guys to have an update on that one next week. And the last thing is, that is the last thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens here that wish to speak during the Citizens' Comments portion of our meeting? Anybody else? Seeing none, we will move on to council comments. I guess we have a, I have a list in order I have to go by. We don't go left to right?
You don't have to go by that list.
You don't have to go by the list? All right, I'm going to start.
Do whatever you want.
All right. I'm going to start on my far right with Counselor Chase.
Thank you, Mr. President.
We'll go around the room, just so you know.
I did have an opportunity to attend the Holiday Lighting Festival on the Town Common, the Winter Wonderful festivities. It was a really terrific event. I think it was very exciting, and it was so well-organized and managed. I think it was a great evening for all. And I just wanted to pay tribute to all the work of the people involved. I know certainly that Merrily Hunt was intimately involved in the organization of that, and I think her efforts have certainly paid great dividends to the town. So I just wanted to commend her in that. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Murphy?
Nothing for me tonight, Mr. President. Thank you.
Counselor George?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of things. My apologies, I wasn't able, excuse me, to make it to Sunday's event. I already had another commitment, but the feedback I got was, despite of, despite the weather, it was well-attended, well-organized. So, you know, I very much appreciate everyone's effort into that, which I thought was great. I didn't say this last meeting, I'll say it now, the common looks fantastic with the lights. So to the whole committee, for the fundraising, implementing that, it is really nice to come in to the center of town at night and see it all lit up like that, which is great. And the other thing, too, is it's really nice to see people walking through the common during the day and at night to take in all of the great decorations, so, which is great. And I'm just going to say this, you know, one more time. In regards to the downtown development, I am 100% in favor of Bridgewater, you know, taking the downtown development to the next level. We have a lot of opportunity. We have a lot of dedicated individuals. I don't know if the public could see, but we had great attendance here, and as soon as Uncle Bob was done, a lot of people left. But it is really encouraging to see so many people that I've never had the opportunity to meet before, to be here, to listen to the presentation, to the comments, and things of that nature. But really, you know, my, my, my two concerns are, one, what's going to be the taxpayer cost? Not to say that taxpayer money shouldn't be used, you know, but we have to be prudent with the limited resources that we have. And if we can do this on our terms versus the state mandate, I think that, and that doesn't mean that we have to stop or go slower, I think we'd be in a much better position for us to do something that's good for Bridgewater. Hopefully that court case is going to inspire other court cases that will kind of put the brakes on the mandate, but still move forward on the expectation of the development. Thank you.
Thank you. Does Counselor Robinson have any comments?
She does.
And you want to relay them to us?
Yes.
Very good.
Thank you to Mr. James Moore for his lovely words at the lighting on the common, also to the B I A for putting on a great event. Thanks to all who supported. I also appreciate Mr. Rivaldi's comment earlier, reminding us and holding council accountable for ensuring citizen input. Lastly, I also agree it is a good time for an update on marijuana recreational expansion. In addition to financial gain, any particular feedback or observations from municipal services like police and fire departments, if there have been any impacts. Thank you. That's all, and good night.
Counselor Perry?
Wish I had time to write it up in a little summary like that. It worked out pretty well. But on those, those same veins, again, thank you to the B I A for their contribution to the common and the lights. I know the Bridgewater Lions, as always, did a great job putting out the decorations. I want to also thank other volunteers that came out to help that morning we put them up, including members of the B B A and members of the Bridgewater Fitness. We had a lot of help that morning, and things came together well. And I've heard nothing but positive comments from the, from the public, thinking it's one of the best years that they've seen the common look the way it does. So, you know, just took, takes coming together of lots of different people to make it where it is today. In regard to Christmas on the common, again, the B B A put on the best event they could despite the rain. I know myself and a few counselors braved the rainy elements to march in the parade, the beginning of it. Didn't have much of a crowd coming out to watch it, but I know it's, we did the best we could despite the weather. And again, thanks to the B B A and all the vendors that came on out trying to make the best day of it as possible. I also did want to make a comment, too, from what was said earlier by a citizen regarding, you know, feedback from the public and our position as counselors. I think we all have our ways of trying to network and reach out to our constituents to get their ideas, their thoughts, their feedback on, you know, what they want to see in town, whether it be in a public event like some counselors do. I know I consult with a lot of the people, I say, on a daily basis here in town, working with them as a chiropractor. Again, I know other counselors have various ways of getting that input as well. So just because it's not out there on Facebook or whatever, doesn't mean that we're not out there talking to our constituents. And I do want to, you know, recommend if any citizen has any questions to any of us individually, our emails are posted on the website. You're welcome to send us an email at any time, and I know I'll always, you know, respond to those emails. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor McKinnon?
Just want to echo what just about everyone said about the center when it comes to Marley and Hall, her volunteers, Uncle Bob and his grant finding, and then the Bridgewater Lions for setting up the center. I don't think it's ever looked this good. I mean, the Jingle Balls or whatever, Jingle Bells, the Jingle Balls, excuse me. But, yeah, the Jingle Bells look pretty cool on the walkways. Those are different. You got the Grinch there now, a whole bunch of different stuff. So it definitely looks a lot better than it has. Maybe we can look into somehow East Bridgewater, Whitman, all these other towns on their commons, they have Christmas trees up from local businesses. Maybe we can look into doing something like that in the future in the common, too. I'm not saying we get over 10 Christmas trees, but local businesses in these other towns are the ones buying them, putting them up, decorating them, giving away gift cards and all that stuff. So maybe that's something we could incorporate in the center in the future, too. And then I could be in the woods of New Hampshire next meeting. I could be here, but if I'm up there, this does not work. So there will not be a Zoom. If I am not here, I am in New Hampshire, and I hope everyone has a Happy New Year and a Merry Christmas, and whatever other holidays you celebrate, I hope you have a best one. And that'll be it.
Thank you. Counselor?
Not as much to say when you're next to last, but the Winter Wonderful event is outstanding. The library looks especially nice. Hopefully next year we'll have funding for the Academy Building. But I do want to let people know that the B I A is always willing to take donations for next year, because it starts with seed money. We don't want to interfere with the Fourth of July, so we're going to probably wait till after that happens. But we have to get fundraising a lot earlier, because it was unknown up until the end that we were going to be able to have the money to do it. I'm 100% in favor of the downtown development, redevelopment. I just want to make sure, like I said, that meetings are when citizens, when our voters and citizens can attend them. I want to thank Mr. Moore, both for his compliments tonight to us, but especially for that wonderful poem that I got to hear twice, once at the Winter Wonderful and once at the event that raised funds for Winter Wonderful about the common. I think it's very impressive, and it's nice to have. The Lions did an outstanding job also. I just think it looks even better than I've seen it before. The arches are outstanding. I took pictures during the day and pictures at night, and it's just nice to see that. And as far as reaching out to constituents, I'm not going to copy Counselor Gallagher's Coffee with the Counselor, but I have talked to the folks over at the McElwain School, and I'm going to try to do something over there, more of an afternoon thing. And I would certainly invite, since people have seven counselors that represent them now, any of the counselors at large to come and join me as well, or any counselor. That's it.
Thank you. And again, I want to thank those that were able to help me with the banner on Sunday. Counselor McKinnon, holding one side and walking down... Counselor McKinnon held it one side and walking down Prospect Street with the rain coming down and I appreciate it. But it's becoming a more festive time in the, of the year in the town, the common looks great. Appreciate the work, Winter Wonderland did and the Bridgewater Lions Club did to make it look good. We just need a little bit of snow, not too much, just a little bit of snow would be nice. But the, and I guess we all should enjoy the holiday season as it is upon us. So that ends our business for this evening. Our next meeting is two weeks from tonight, Tuesday, December 19th at 7:00. We do not have an executive session this evening, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second, this does require a roll call vote.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson? She said yes. Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
And Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
You are adjourned.